Can I have a motion to open our work session?
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so welcome to our work session of Tuesday, September fifth. I hope everyone had a great summer, now we're back to the grind. So we're gonna start our work session, we have Pace and Nexus back with us. And we're gonna jump right into talking about visioning outreach, scope and goals. Would you like to take it away?
Okay, that was mine. Excellent. Okay, nice to see everyone again. And I am gonna use the slides because I actually don't have them in front of me. But I think the purpose of tonight was just to go through and start the sort of the brainstorming session amongst all of us regarding the goal and objectives for the outreach effort to just make sure that we're on the same page as all of you. Make sure that we have it defined properly before we move forward too quickly. And also just to, you know, reiterate, as we move forward and what we do tonight, and we circle back with all of you, this will help us also create the narrative of what goes on any of these website or marketing pieces. Some of the language that we might share this, you know, this evening is what we're gonna then now use. So, and I also just to remind everyone, I think it's important we're all on the same page because then how we communicate this effort is critical, that we're all saying the same thing because that is what we're trying to accomplish and that our citizens understand what we're doing. So on that note, I thought what we would do is sort of similar to how I would facilitate any type of, you know, mission statement with a group. I wanted to go around, I know some people have begun to brainstorm already and sent us some of the input about, you know, your goals or some of the results for the initiative that you, you know, had felt. And so I have that, but I'm not gonna read from it and I think we should all just simply participate at the same time so we can hear from one another. It's broken up into the following four questions that we're gonna think about right now. And I did, I think preface this meeting with many of these, but I wanna hear from everyone around the table about the goals, what you think your goals are for this. The desired results for this initiative, right? What are we trying to accomplish at the end of the day? And I know everyone, you know, is talking about the public feedback and wanting to hear the public voice, but really what is the results at the end? Like what are you, you know, planning to do with the information? Because we are going to need to express that to the public as to why are they participating in the public or process? Because if your public doesn't understand why, they're confused and they're not gonna feel like it's going anyplace. And so we're gonna start talking about that a bit more. And then I think it would be nice for us to hear also the topics for consideration. We may not get to all of the variety of topics that you would like us to facilitate and some of the subject matters, but that's fine, we have to start somewhere, but it then begins to allow us the opportunity to go home and structure questions that might be, you know, talked about with your public. So I'm gonna stop talking. And we're gonna start going around or you're gonna participate and everyone's gonna participate actively. So who wants to start? What do you believe your goals are for this initiative?
So I think the reason-
I just want you to know your words are gonna go up.
But like if I say um, don't take it.
She's got that, she's got that.
So it's really to determine the best uses for town owned land in the tribal hamlet. A lot of it, a lot of it is parking. A lot of it's parking lots. Some of it is building, but really the best uses for that town owned land and what is the community missing? What do we wanna see? How can we appropriately accomplish potentially gaining some of those missing items while also being realistic about what can go there as well as being realistic about current needs, right? We can't get rid of the entire parking, not to mean parking, but does it mean there are ways we can work around it? So and to get community input on that.
Perfect, okay. So some of the big words I heard, right, community input, I think, you know, understanding what's missing, what's realistic, right? Making sure that we convey some of that to the public as well. And then the word best uses of the town owned, which is another, I think, key word I just heard you say. So that's up there. Another goal that you might have or could say yes.
I pretty much hit the nail on the head. I'd love to hear from as many people maybe as we can, we said, you know, that they're a priority. I would love, I know what I think is missing, I know what my demographic thinks is missing, but I'm curious if that's the overwhelming answer? Or are other people think other things are missing and what is the best use? While keeping in mind that we do need to preserve some of that parking, that's an issue we have in the hamlet for sure. We've got a lot, there's not enough parking. So to do away with all of it. And also what's going to fit in the community if that's important to be to preserving what's special about the hamlet?
Okay, so that's another additional thing though, so we don't care. Also hearing from the community, whether it's fit or what do we always, what do we wanna preserve that's currently here?
Yep, I don't necessarily-
And I think that's the other side to it because people will tend to go towards the change potentially or the preservation side only, and so having that balance in the conversation, okay? All right, good.
Yes, so I'm actually just, because I didn't share whatever, I'm gonna reiterate what I had sent. And it's pretty simple, I don't know what to use it as. But what I wrote was to determine the community attitudes regarding the current use and the potential alternate uses for the town owned land around the town station, including and especially the public parking lots.
Okay.
So I mean, I want it, I don't wanna assume any particular preferences. I want to know what the attitudes are, but I wanna make sure that we have guardrails. What is reasonable to consider, what might theoretically be actionable, what theoretically is not actionable.
Okay. Okay. And I want, will you, Jacqueline, will you put up the word guardrails? Because I think I'm gonna come back to that as well. But thank you for that, the guardrails, because I do wanna talk about that.
I don't mean to reiterate what I think I would say, other than the fact that people have to feel as if they're getting their hands dirty and building that garden that's gonna grow into whatever it becomes in future because it makes you, they're not gonna feel vested, they're not gonna feel part of it. So that has to happen, but also stay with that theme, they have to be realistic in what we're planting, what we're growing. It's not gonna be a sequoia, it's gonna be a fitness now. But that garden has to work. So you have to find a way to have people really wanna come because I think there's also fatigue in the four days code. And then from before that, all these times that we've gone through this cycle and really have not moved the ball forward. So then you have to get over that tired, we're, we've done this already.
Yes, okay, so investment, I heard, right? The investment of our community and their time and energy. And then, which will go to our next few questions again, it's like what are they getting out of this? Like why participate? So we'll come back to that in a second, but. Oh yeah, 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 yes, yes. We're gonna give everything back to you and then we're also gonna, so we'll summarize. And then I'm hoping at the end, like we'll have somewhat of a mission statement that you all can then review.
Yeah, so I agree with everything that's been said, I don't need to reiterate. But I would just maybe step back a little. I think we talked about the what that we're doing, I just have a why, an overall why, you know, that why we're doing this. And overall, the umbrella for me is to increase the community's vibrancy, you know, the social vibrancy as well as economic vibrancy. And essentially to create a sense of community. Because I think that's missing a little bit and that's what I've heard over the years from the community that we're missing that sense of belonging. So I'd like to see something in that space, whatever that is, whether there's some housing, whether there are amenities, whether it's like a new community center or anything else, that it's something that brings the community together. Where people can gather, feel a sense of belonging and feel that vibrancy. That is my goal, that is my mission.
Yeah, and I think, well, and again, what we're pulling from each of you, whether you realize it or not, is it may not fit within any of the buckets that we're talking about, but the language you're using expressing this becomes a language that we pull for, yeah, narrative purposes, for purposes of our logos or whatever. So when I hear, right, vibrancy or social connections or whatever, that's, these are things that we can use later on. So, okay. Any other thoughts that of goals that you have for this project? And then I also just, for just a brief moment, even think of, which is gonna go, I might skip us into like what? No, I won't, okay. But I won't. So and so then what, let's say we go through this process, at the end of the day, what is the desired result? Like what do you want your public to get out of this at the end of the day? Just that they participated, that they had a voice at the table? That they, that you have in your hands, you know, the community consensus around your next land use action? I mean, like how, what is it that you're hoping to get from this?
Yeah, I mean, I want to come to a place at the end where we have an idea of what we can do next or should do next as a town that is going to be embraced by the community and desired rather than getting to a proposed change and then finding out what the reactions are. I want us to have a sense of the attitudes towards different types of things and for us to be able to use that to guide our next step.
Okay.
And I think ultimately I'd also like it to be something that because the community has been so involved, something that the community at large can really get behind. And while recognizing that we have a lot of different constituencies in town, whether it be, you know, school age children and we have people who are different ages and different desires. Some kids like sports, other people want arts, whatever it may be. I don't know that you're never gonna get the entire town to agree to something, but if it's something that we can collaboratively work through, maybe, I'd love it to be something that the entire town can get behind and there are pieces that bring in the constituency.
So and the reason I wanna talk about this a little bit more is that we, that is gonna be the most important question that comes to the table is what are these results, what are we doing with these results too? And so the two are sort of connected, the two bullets. And I want us to make sure like we are careful in the way that this is being expressed because what you're not gonna get from the process is an implementation plan of what to do next, right? What you're going to get because it's your community are going to be their values. That's what we're gonna be getting, you know, getting from them. And then ideas and thoughts and hopefully we can begin to build some consensus in places. But what you won't have is the actions to take, right? They might express some strategies and ideas because some of them might be land use experts and are gonna say, well, here's what we need to do next and we can write those down for you and you'll have them in a bucket. But I just wanna make sure everyone knows, like what can't, what won't come from it will be a technical document, right?
What I'm hoping we're walking out of this with as a town is an understanding of what the community is. And then we have our experts in land use that we can work with to say, okay, so how do we take a vision that's generally acceptable to the community and desired that people can see as the future? That then we can start taking next steps proposals or rezoning or building, whatever it is that we decide to do, that we know that it's something that we think our community can get behind and it's not a repeat of something we've been through in the past where too late we find out that we went down the wrong path.
Yeah, and I want you all to know too, even if we find all the different values, right? Let's just call it values for now, the community's values. Sometimes it's the solution, right? Or the next step that's going to cause the anxiety and the tension. Because we, so we're going to need as a group and as you continue forward in this process and I'll keep reminding everyone, is to reconnect everyone back to those values. Because again, they might not think, there might be people who totally believe in, I'm just gonna say, housing. You know, tons of housing downtown, but the minute you say zoning change to get there, they freak out with the zoning change. Because, and who knows why, right? That scares everybody, the solution scares everybody. And so we're, you as a town are gonna have to think, there's gonna be a variety of solutions that we can use, right? To accomplish these and we should reiterate that.
We have a question too.
Oh, yes, is this process something we can be using to help the community understand the ways that a vision might be achieved? So like, don't be terrified when you hear zoning change because that is a necessary step in getting to that vision that you do want. And don't be scared you don't have to, you don't have to write zoning code. Like I made him like, you know, Joe down the block, he doesn't have to write zoning code, we have the experts to do that. But I mean, is that a reasonable thing to expect to be able to convey? Is that these are words that you might hear later and this is why? Education.
I think we could probably-
I was just gonna say yes.
Do that.
Okay, well, then yes.
Because I don't know that there's a simple answer.
Yeah, I think we can try to do our best.
We ultimately decide what we're going to do with the information that you give us.
Correct, I guess, I guess, I need to think this out more, but I would get, I would, I don't wanna get people, again, into the solution bucket because then they can't get into the creative bucket of what we, you know, right? And if we can, whether it's show pictures or talk about it as in our field of what this is or what others are doing or whatever, to brainstorm, I think there might be more creativity without-
So maybe that's like a next step that we have, we just educated on how we-
Right, so what I would understand from you is, is to me, this wasn't necessarily meant to be like a master plan process. We did that already.
Correct.
We know kind of what the values are of the community. To me, it was meant to be, we know those values and let's say, what do you wanna see in this town to enhance your life here? Which is a little more solution based, it's not saying, like let's say it came out, everyone said, you know what? We really want a community center, we want a place for little kids to go, we want a place for seniors to go, wanna have indoor basketball court, we wanna have places for kids to do arts, whatever it is. That to me, that's, that's what I wanna find out. I don't necessarily need to be like, well, what type of, you know, steel beams need to go into something like that? Like that's not, but so it, to me, that is a solution. Like I wanna make sure we're getting, what do you mean by solution?
I think I mean, I'm in the world of land use today. So there's a way we're gonna be having to accomplish all of those things you're talking about, right? And whatever, whatever those solutions are, I'm thinking in the land use world or where Sabrina's gonna start to fit in or your developers are gonna have to fit in, that those, I wanna leave that off the table with all the different, the-
The tools to get there, thank you.
Tools, how to get there, got it.
Right, but you wanna know what we wanna do, and if it's feasible, not necessarily how to accomplish it. Correct, but you can't throw out, we're gonna rezonate. Because that's a tool to get a community center and there's many other things that need to be considered to land a community center in the parking lot, right? And so, but it's understanding what people want and do they have a priority preference for those things? Because with each like, there's a balance of what are you willing to give up, right?
Yeah, that's another thing that I think supports the trade offs.
Well, can I just finish on something at this point? I just wanted to answer the question that you originally asked because I think we're, we've gotten-
I'm sorry, that was my fault.
No, today we got into the solutions bucket quite a lot and you were asking, what are the desired results of this process? And I just wanna say, because that's a very broad question, but at the end of the day, whatever solutions we come up with, I think that we wanna end up with people feeling that whatever gets built there is a result of a truly inclusive process. That even if we don't do what they wanted, that they had a voice, they had the opportunity and that we actually heard them. And that that would hopefully be reflected in what we did.
I also wanna know if everyone's top priority really is just a parking lot that they can get in and out of fast?
Right, it could be that.
I mean, I personally hope it's not, but if that truly is the priority, I wanna know that too.
Right, right. That's sort of like what we wanna keep, what's important. But I think when you're, when you guys are bringing it out to the public, most people are not in the land use space, so I think I got confused with you saying solutions, so I think just-
No, we'll make sure to, we're, we'll make sure, we're not gonna, yeah, yeah, maybe we won't be using.
Joking.
And I'll take my land use hat off too, yeah. Okay, what about, well Jeremy, did you wanna add anything? I'm sorry, to the desired results?
No, I think we're saying- I think we're saying-
Okay, good. Which is good, which is very good. And we talked about what you plan to do with the information? So we're gonna memorialize it. And what's gonna be your next step?
Well, I hope that we implement. You know, we're not just doing it just as a theoretical exercise to then put in a bucket and, you know, for a while. I would like to see something implemented.
So what's going to be, that's fine. I think we need to be specific though in what are we doing with the information?
We need to enhance what result ultimately, but it's also gonna encourage from understanding whether it's our term or terms down the road because it's public land and there's always a lot of excitement for lack of better term out around public land. But to make that happen, the community has the ability to ultimately have a referendum if they don't, you know, like what we're doing. But we have to lean on use of rain, get people in, understand what we can do after you've had this initial conversation, what the possibilities are, how we get there. But I think managing expectations is so critical because people also have to understand this is not gonna happen next year. It may not happen in three years and it may take ten years over time to hear, hear and hear. I understand it's all connected, but I think it's patience and managing expectation and having courage to take the next step whatever it is.
Well, and look, it might be bifurcated steps too. Like let's say everybody says at the train station, I want a community center and housing and amusement park. You know, we might say, okay, well, it seems like maybe we can accomplish the community center, like quickly and that we can see and people can enjoy that. And then maybe the next step is we're gonna look at the housing or the amusement park. It doesn't need to all be done at once. And I think we also need to be cognizant of changing, you know, transportation patterns, things like that. Like we're coming out of COVID, people are going back part-time, maybe that's gonna move back to full-time. Who knows, so we need to kind of look at all of that together as well.
Perfect. Is it fair for us to say then that with the results of this initiative and as we summarize it and bring it back to the public sort of with their, you know, sharing whatever it is that we created the end, that you would be taking that and working towards an implementation plan immediately thereafter? Meaning, okay, meaning, right, that you, similar to the comp plan, I'm just gonna use that as the, you know, when that was happening, because it is in a way, you took your community results, you put it into a plan, granted. So I just wanna make sure the public, when they're saying like, what are you doing with it? What are you doing with it? No one's, what are you gonna, it's gonna sit on a shelf. We need to have an answer of why that's not sitting on a shelf afterwards. And so and I think that if you're saying whether that's gonna be potentially, well, from it, we're gonna then work on a, and again, this may not be the case, a revitalization plan specifically for X, the parking lot? Or is it, we're gonna create, you know, broadly, we're gonna sit down and come up with the ten strategies of accomplishing X? You know, like I, we just wanna be able to-
I think there's a step in between in my mind before we get there which is to wanna be able to define what we can do for the trade offs are. I know we originally talked about doing a survey. That's still kind of what I picture in my mind to kind of refine into what we can take to actions.
See, I feel like I'm not convinced we're gonna need a survey. If we get enough people participating in this process and now when your initial timeline that you presented us was like twelve weeks, then maybe a survey was more appropriate, but now it's like a really long time. I feel like that can be so much more wholesome and make sure to get more people involved. I would prefer it to be much shorter. I liked, but definitely said, I'm not convinced we need a survey. I think if people wanna participate, they're gonna have ample opportunity to participate in this process.
So and I think that, I think that we'll get a good sense through this process of getting, like we talked, the expression of the attitudes and values and things like that. But I don't know that we can just take a lot of consensus desires and put those into implementation because we could have things that are just not compatible, but everybody says they want them and I don't, like how do you quantify what trade offs people are willing to make? I just, I feel like that's a quantitative question, not a qualitative question. But I mean, I could be wrong depending on where we come at the end.
You're correct, I was just gonna say it's gonna really come where we are at the end. I just, you know, again, when we do comp plans, we are able to tell the public what you're gonna be doing with the comp plan so that, again, feeling listened to and that it's not gonna sit on a shelf. And with this, I just wanna make sure, again, you are gonna get that question, we are gonna get the question, what are you doing with this and how fast? And it's, granted, you're right, it could be one year, you're gonna accomplish some things and then the other things are gonna be ten years potentially. But they need to, they want to know that we're gonna have some type of action after this.
Action then, I think is exactly what we need.
Okay, so I just wanna like, and we can play with it, I just wanted to hear from all of you too.
Reaction could be, sorry, reaction could be getting down to implementation, but I feel like that's, we need this input first.
Yeah, I don't think we're in a position now to write anything off a survey, it could be useful at the end of this process. We just can't tell yet, I don't see how it would hurt exactly, we want true inclusive participation.
I guess I feel confident, the reason why we want with you guys is we feel that you're going to do an excellent job. You're going to make sure that the community knows that this is happening. You're gonna make sure that we are able to tap into everyone that wants to participate. I guess I just come from a place where, you know, lead a horse to water, right? At some, we can't, not everybody's going to participate, there's going to be, I didn't get that, no, I didn't see that concept. We get that now, right? We email you ten times. So I feel like you will, at the end of your work, you will present us with your findings and then we can decide, do we still think that we need a survey? Do we feel like we have the answers? Is there an overwhelming consensus? If seventy percent of the community respond, and let's say it's, I'm not talking about seventy percent of a hundred people, I'm talking about a thousand people, whatever the number is, we will determine if that was a good sample and if we have the information that we need. And then I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that everyone would like a plan moving forward. I think we all want this to be something that we implement. We don't want it to be something that sits on a shelf.
Okay, all right.
And look, it's not necessarily gonna be something that we implement either. It may be that we are implementing parts of it and then we wanna explore a public-private partnership, you know? Depending on what, we're not building housing or a community center and amusement park. We might want to, but we could then say, you know, we know this is what needs to be done and then we explore, well, okay, we're gonna go out and everyone bring us proposals for building X.
This is the what we, I mean, that's where this then has, which will cover later, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's where it's at, because we're just-
Yes, exactly.
Okay. John, anything that you wanna ask?
No, I mean, I'm mashing up words here that we will wordsmith at some point,
Yeah, all right. Right. Okay.
But I like the measuring community values and desires towards a best consensus. Best may not be the most elegant word before consensus, but we'll find it.
And maybe, and values, going back to values, that might not be the best word, right?
Right.
We're using that, but it might not be the best because that's, you know, it's a little, it's not as specific as we wanna get for the, for the initiatives.
It's more like it's desires and, or wants and needs, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Whole words, a bit.
Values, yeah.
Okay, so the final question here, unless anyone wants to add anything else, are the topics that you would like to receive feedback on? Now, when I say that, again, I know you're all thinking like, we just wanna get feedback on whatever we want, but I have been hearing you say parking garage a few times. So parking, parking garage, what are other topics or maybe ideas that all of you have been hearing the community talk about that should be added to this list for us to just consider?
I just wanna make sure, it's not just the parking lot, it's this property, it's the rec field,
Yes.
not that I think anyone wants to touch the rec field, but we wanna hear that.
No, so let's add those though, right? Because again, everyone's saying parking lot a lot or parking garages or parking space and that's fine. So parking is certainly a topic, but right, the rec-
It's also the majority of the space.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So the rec, but still, there are-
Words I think about, so the words I think about are housing, recreation, entertainment.
What was I think about, so the words I think about are housing, recreation, entertainment, social gathering spaces.
Yeah.
Recreation for short, recreation.
Community space.
Town, what about the town government, like?
Mm-hmm. Town government, yes, but that's meeting.
Okay.
More here too.
Yeah.
I'm meeting space.
I put that into facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, multi-use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's repurposing too.
Repurposing?
No, just because of this video for X amount of time, doesn't mean it has to stay as it is.
Okay.
Is it?
Cuz it could make sense, let's say, to knock down this building and take this whole parking lot and put a community center here, but then you know, where are you gonna move the parking and how's that gonna, you know, and then maybe a community center includes town offices, or it's attached, or we have to take some, so all of that kind of needs to go together.
Oh, it, one of the other things I'd like to know is like about time and the time that people are spending in these town spaces and how they wanna be spending it.
Okay.
Do do they, again, this is of like prioritization, is our expanded rec facilities the way they want their time to be invested down here? Or do they wanna minimize the amount of time that they're walking from the train station to the car, or is it the overall commute time that's their priority? Um, in, you know.
No, that's good, thank you, that's really interesting.
So. And one of the topics I wanted definitely receive feedback on is what
I love it.
do you feel you need from the town in terms of facilities, right, that you're not, that are not currently being provided?
Okay, so facilities, not services, right?
Facilities, but facilities.
Okay. Okay.
But that can go hand in hand with services somewhat, because certainly with rec, because if someone's saying, I want an indoor badminton court, or I want, so that's a service that might be
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Right.
provided through rec or pickleball or whatever it is, right? Um, that's something we wanna know, I I, but I don't mean services like, you know, you want twice the garbage pickup, that's that I don't wanna know. But how can we best utilize this land to incorporate your needs and wants and what you wanna see from your daily life in this town?
Yeah. Perfect. I also like this idea of the day in the life of, like, I don't know, playing with that, like this when you're here, what's your day in the life, what's your ideal day in the life when you place yourself downtown, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You are right, it's not in the middle of the paddles.
Mm-hmm. Right. And what do you wanna do here, maybe there?
I also want to have a um sustainability, sustainability.
Okay.
Um, so you know, how are we thinking towards the future of the planet, frankly, um, and you know, what types of things, um, and do people care, I guess, yeah.
Right.
Like it just, that's something I support.
Okay, anything else? Don't worry, it's not your last uh, so yeah, we we're back for more, so. Okay, that's very helpful, and for our framing purposes, and I think also the topics, I um, I did wanna hear what jumped out at you immediately so that we're ready to phrase, whether it's questions or topic areas, or however, we're gonna envision the larger community meetings, um, or posters or whatever we're doing um within some of those topic areas, so. Um, we are, okay, so let's move to, we um, so without, again, we did this, I mean, we're about to go back and probably recreate a few things. But we wanted to show you, um, Anna stage is gonna show you in one second, in the next slide, a a little bit of what our original thoughts were in terms of like the branding of the effort. Um, and again, it's it's not obviously a concept of anything we did here, but how these things can look when you're, when we're reaching out to people, I don't know if you would like to say anything else.
No, I mean, that's right, I I think we were, we were inspired um by the RFP, by our conversations, um, and wanted to, I can't help but scratch it, you know? And so we wanted to explore, and also I think it's important for us to review a draft, because then you guys get to say like this, hate this, and please engage your interests also in what these look.
Right.
Um, so that's the point of what you're about to see is.
Yeah, so this is not your brand, not your brand, but we just wanna get your thoughts on like what immediately jumps out, and remember, the words might not be right because we were just throwing things down, but now that we've had what we've done, that's that's helpful to us.
I love that new is, I think, right off that strike, sneak is, you know, Newcastle is the name of the town, but it's also, you know, it's it suggests future indifference and.
Yeah.
Says it.
No, no, but I like it, I like that.
Yes.
But it's basically connotates it.
I'm not not sure about the colors, but.
I don't like the colors.
But I like the new and bold, and that's the biggest part.
I don't like bucolic.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
No, it's just. That's just the, that's very well known.
Oh, you don't appreciate.
And I find it different.
Oh, yeah, we are.
Forget about this sort.
Yeah, I think we're gonna get people who can.
I like envisioned, and I like envisioned with new.
Okay, so we like envision, we like the new and the how big new is.
Yeah.
Envision is something new.
Yeah, that that would be.
We don't love, that no one can read it, I don't, I can't read it, yeah, so.
Yeah.
But I like the sentiment, the collective community response, I like that.
Yeah, I like the sentiment.
I like the envision, I'm not sure about express and respond.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the right-hand side, we got right-hand.
I'm a little shy.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Oh, yeah.
It's just.
Yeah, so, so the right, the right-hand side, I'm sorry, so the right-hand side are just through, well, we're gonna show you a video that again, just exploring that we made, so the three words are just added to that, that's not part of the the draft logo, those are separate.
Right.
They were key words.
Yeah, those are the key words.
It's your new palette, Newcastle.
New.
Yeah, they're.
They're coming.
It was for colors.
Okay, perfect.
Also, I don't like the squishy, yeah, it's something that people can really see, you have to decipher, right?
And colors.
So we. Yeah. We, we actually have a logo, not the town seal, but we have another logo, but we approved like a couple of years ago.
Yeah, my new cup.
No, we're not, we're not.
I can send that to, no, that was done, we approved it.
Yeah, cuz that's what it is.
Yeah, but it was post-laboring, like, um, I, well, I I think in terms of colors, we might wanna use it, I'll send it to you.
Do you wanna use that or? Oh, of course. Oh, okay. Okay.
What does it say down there, a collective community response?
Response.
Oh, response, you see.
See, that's not gonna be a script.
How does it, I couldn't, I couldn't read any of their commentary. I didn't know, I didn't know that was community.
I think it's a script.
That would actually cause a tension a lot, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I should have said.
I guess so, yeah. On the idea, collective community is is people like, response, not so much, maybe it's another word we're using.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think.
Engagement, please.
Collectment.
Community engagement.
Like a passion, okay?
No, you're right, engagement, but it's community vision, but that's.
Right, yeah.
You're saying maybe engagements, collective community.
You could say collective community vision, yeah.
Well, I think we.
I know.
I think about the, I think I should suggest the process, the collective community, it's, so it's not um like it's not a response, it's a creation or something of, yeah, I want it to be an active word, okay?
Active. Yeah, and especially after all that you guys had just said, we were gonna be able to go off of a lot, right?
How about, how about, I want to say.
Oh, I want to say those.
How about collective community building?
Collective community building.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so then.
Because it, you know, building needs a lot of things.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
No, it never existed.
I've never seen that.
No one's heard of it, it should be used.
I've never seen that.
Facilities.
Mm-hmm.
It implies.
Mm-hmm.
Building community is.
Yeah.
That's a memory, which is what I just.
Right.
Yeah.
Has more things.
I was talking about, yeah, has a lot of meanings, yeah.
Should, we wanted to use it on more fun days.
Alright, so we're gonna show, let's just really, let's just keep going, we're gonna show you, thank you, and we'll, again, that was just for you to give us a little feedback and quick response. And then this is something that is whether it get.
Sorry, I'm snipping all of these, you never know when something crashes, so I'm doing extra and extra precaution.
We'll always have the recording for you guys to film as well.
That's true.
That's true.
The video, right, the.
Yeah, it's it's gonna probably be loud, Jack, the first one's everything, just to be.
Oh.
It's a little.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I had to turn my volume off.
Oh, okay.
And try to. So, so yeah, the idea of something like this is if if we pull out a couple of words that essentially, if you think about the mission statement exercise you guys just went through, Tiffany, pulling out three words that would basically divide that into pieces, you know, that these people would understand the process they're going to go through, they're gonna envision, they're going to.
Something I think is really important to just put out there, so Newcastle as a town, right, has hamlets of Chapewa and.
Can, can you mute us? Will she mute you from here?
Right.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I don't want to put out there that this is for Millwood, because time like, so.
Just as an implication that this is on the.
Oh, yeah, but maybe that's fine, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think like.
I can tell you more. When they're. Just hate me out of your voice, cuz they can still. I got it, that's so.
But what I was saying is, while I love the new, you know, envisioned Newcastle, we wanna make sure that people know that we're not, we're only looking at the Chapewa Hamlet at this time, and that we're not discounting Millwood and other areas of Newcastle.
I want them to participate.
But we want, we want everyone to participate, because people in Millwood are utilizing the Chapewa Hamlet, for instance, we want everyone to participate. Chapewa Hamlet is part of Newcastle, but this, but.
But it's not a hamlet, you're studying, you're studying the town on land.
We're studying town on land within the Chapewa Hamlet.
That's what you said.
Correct.
So not, but not town on land at Getney Park, for instance, it's only in within the.
Correct. And but it's also not the Chapewa Hamlet.
No, it's town on land within the Chapewa Hamlet, we need to be sure.
We have to make sure that everybody feels like they're.
There's town, this would be in the process, but it's. So this is, I know we're all fitting all that in there, but yeah.
No, but it could say a collective community, you know, whatever, engagement on discussion on, you know,
Discussion.
Of town of.
of town on land in the Chapewa Hamlet, to work, I leave you guys to figure out how to say that, a a public, you know, land in the Chapewa Hamlet, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yes. That is a really.
And it's public land in the town of Newcastle, and I'm not gonna lie.
I, no, it's not in the town of Newcastle, it's just in the Chapewa Hamlet, it's not Getney Park, it's in Millwood.
Or it's not.
We need to look at. And even a subset of the hamlet.
It's just in Millwood. It's it's a, it's town on land in the Chapewa Hamlet, not in the town of Newcastle.
It's also not all the town of Newcastle.
We're not looking at all the parks we own in in the West End, we're just looking at the Chapewa Hamlet, very specific.
Very specific.
Right, so and okay, so and it's not all gonna capture in all the, but, 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 well, we can play with it, I do, I
No. Yeah.
fully hear that, and then the second piece is that that helps us with the narrative, so you click on that, or you have the video or whatever it is.
There's a, it's, right?
We're gonna, what?
Yeah.
We said regarding the use of town lands surrounding the Chapewa train station.
Okay.
That was how we defined it in the RFP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And your resolutions related to this.
Right.
Yep, yeah, I mean, the point is, I mean, it's Newcastle land.
I mean, that's just enough, but it's not just the train station.
Yeah, but there's Newcastle land all along the town.
It's this property that could be a recipe.
Yeah.
And if you say public land.
I'm.
Then you don't think people are like this to the, right?
Yeah.
It is, I think that that's actually too limiting, I think people are gonna think that only means the train station, parking lot.
Yes.
Either way, I think they're gonna have to, in the sessions, explain what's the scope, for.
Can you do a map on here?
Well, I think it's publicly.
Yeah, let's go to the map, because part of.
Town on land in the Chapewa Hamlet.
Well, let's put a map on there.
Well, no, we have a, well, can you scroll to the map?
I was gonna say.
But when you do that video, it should be the Chapewa, like town on land in the Chapewa Hamlet, it shouldn't be something that looks like our parks.
Exactly.
So. Part.
Not gonna look pretty.
Part of what we recognized was important, that's consistent with all of the style.
It's the New Castle train station in this top.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's.
Yeah.
Is it making everyone aware of what the footprint of the parcels you're intent to study here?
That's exactly.
And whether or not, and so this theme will will reoccur, and maybe it reoccurs in this
That's not the part.
introductory messaging graphic, but clearly, I, you know, that's, this is an important piece of information, it will be out front.
Yeah.
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 And I, and we're confident, I think, right, that sort of outsiders looking in, that the most significant piece of information people will process at the beginning is twenty-three plus acres. Most people, I guarantee you, will go, there's not twenty-three acres down there.
That's true.
And and, you know, that's gonna be important to drive lots of dialogue, or I think it will be important, if we're right on a lot of.
For what it's worth, I would I would prefer you didn't use twenty-three plus acres, like approximately.
We have the exact number, I think it's twenty-three point four.
I think, I think just approximately, because I just, I think that because of previous conversations that have been had in the town, I think that it could
This is twenty-three.
be misinterpreted, the plus sign could be misinterpreted.
Well, that is precision.
Yeah.
That's very true.
Yeah.
Um, and one thing I think we also need to be clear, just looking at this map is I think the majority of people would be upset if they thought we were ripping that out the rec field. So I think it's important just to get, but I, we wanna hear from them about that, so I think it's important to make sure we let people know what you wanna change and what you want to maintain.
Yes.
So that people aren't thinking, oh my god, they're gonna put a pa- a pa- a big building where the rec field is.
We already have one of those.
You know, yeah, and and we use it for concerts and, but there might be, people might say, you know what, we really think we should turf that field.
That's all.
But wait, well, we're just talking about branding, so getting into a lot of granular details now that that we.
But it is part of branding.
Well, branding is just the the few words that we have, and then you get into more details in the explanations of the branding.
It's like, but it's a fulsome discussion.
A brand is something that you see visually and you get it, there's not a whole lot of.
Mm-hmm. No, I think what, well, all of everything you all are just talking about though, for us, I know that it, it is not going to the brand right now, exactly.
Exactly.
It helps us with.
But it's helping to inform the brand.
Yeah. Yes, like the fact that we all just reacted in a in a half a second about the Newcastle piece, right, we all, for a moment,
Yeah.
You.
even, you know, we forget, and we are in Newcastle, and it looks good, and, but like, yeah, like how, is it part of the brand that we need to change, right? Or is it in the narrative that we're changing, but envisioned Newcastle's still there, I, that was just an important piece right now that happened, and then just hearing your words of whatever you're expressing, you know, how you're expressing things helps us, that's all. So it's not, it may not go in the brand, but um, I think that the storyline of keeping, you know, preserving
In the story, it's part of the story, right.
and change is important, that we're, you know, we need to make sure that's presented properly as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, because people see branding that just says change, they're not gonna be happy.
Any? Yeah. Other thoughts? Okay, so I am, I am not gonna do the next part, because it's gonna be okay.
We're not gonna talk about the I D's.
Do you, okay, well, go one slide back, we have two options here.
Okay.
We can work quickly.
Door number one.
Or, door number one is you work quickly in thinking about the following things, partner organizations and individuals that help market. You know, it's very right, and then.
Can see.
I'll read it out loud. Yeah, I I too am like, what are the partner organizations, individuals that can help market this outreach, you know, this process or assist, right, in getting the word out? Who are the key organizations or groups that we should consider meeting with at their regular scheduled meetings, or maybe we create some, you know, partnerships among organizations that that will have a meeting that we, you know, can go to? And then the methods or locations or events to solicit input, so I can, door one is we just can brainstorm some of this now. Door two is I come back to you and you, uh, this is homework, and you send your homework to Sabrina, and we take what you give us, and we'll organize it, obviously, and we'll put that within this fuller, you know, summary document, and I'll give you a demo.
I think door two is quite easy, considering you've done this in so various fashion.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, okay, so fine, door two is fine, the only thing that I really would like to know then, if we're gonna go door two, is the key organizations or groups that you would consider are so, like, I don't wanna call it high priority, but there's just a mass of them, let's say, or um, or they have some type of very uh, maybe, or maybe they have a mobility issue, like the seniors, that we should go to them, um, or maybe it's that they just have a a different type of stake than the general public as to what happens downtown.
I think the, the new young families, parents, uh, people who've moved here in the last few years, who have children in preschools,
Okay.
um, or in or elementary school.
Okay.
To me, I think that's a group that we need to try extra hard to reach out to, because they've recently made the long-term decision.
Right.
And it's.
And they're wanting to be here or whatever.
Okay.
And a lot of them here during COVID too and don't feel necessarily part of the community.
Yeah.
Or maybe don't have a, don't know the history, right?
Yeah.
Right.
They don't know the history and are interested in seeing, you know, what could be, you know.
Right, right.
On the other side, that coin of people that have been here for a long time who know what the town is missing.
Definitely go to seniors.
So, the ward at the Nesters, so they, they know what they're lacking.
Yep. Or maybe don't want things to change.
Yeah.
I think it's true too.
But I think.
Okay, so wait, let me, let me, let me just wait, Jeremy, I actually didn't hear you. Who was your group that you're saying?
I was saying people who've been here a while, who know what this town is, but what it's missing.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, D Nesters, seniors.
Yeah, or they even have to have the Nesters, they've been here for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years.
Oh, okay, or there may not be seniors right now.
But I think an organized group we could reach out to to get to the young parents, or parents in general would be the PTA.
Yep.
More than the school district itself, but the PTA is the separate organization.
Yes.
But preschool parents too, preschool parents, that's the difference that do not have, there's a huge group of parents that do not have children in the schools yet.
And.
Right, yeah.
And I wasn't, I'm not that far removed from them, and I wanna make sure that all the preschool parents at, you know, Play Care, Bassel, World Cup, they also have the opportunity.
Batora.
Batora, right, there.
There aren't too many of the preschools, so we can reach out to all of them.
Right, we can put flyers there and and.
Yes, yes, we wanna make sure that they know what's going on too.
They can maybe put it in their newsletters, but to me, that's similar to the PTA, it's just we'll do it at the preschool level.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, correct.
I think we also have to go to the senior center.
Okay.
Senior center being absolutely that's.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, then there's also.
And they have meetings and they can schedule a special meeting for this.
Perfect.
Well, well, what about, um, the, with the Housebound?
The House seniors.
We can coordinate that with Christine, right, though?
But the Housebound seniors, yeah, and.
That's something we can coordinate with Christine.
But the senior center is in touch with that.
And. We, we, right, and we deliver meals to a lot of the Housebound seniors, so we can make sure that we put
Yes, yes.
I just wanna make sure that we do, we do, we do it exactly.
Right, right.
Yeah.
They're included.
Information in with those meals that get delivered to the Housebound seniors to make sure they're aware of it and they can either zoom in and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For sure, for sure. I can tell like that.
Yeah, that's what happens in the senior center, we can see.
Yeah.
Okay, any other chamber or?
Could do the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yeah.
Uh.
Can we, would the Chamber of Commerce? Yeah, Chamber of Commerce.
Because merchants are important also.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if we needed to think about merchants, I mean, they're a chamber, but maybe probably.
No, they're in within our chamber.
They're extremely.
Yeah.
And, okay, so that's good.
And I think potentially, I know a lot of neighborhoods have kind of neighborhood associations and email groups for the entire neighborhood. Like I know my neighborhood, for instance, we even email groups for our entire neighborhood, which is like two hundred houses. So that's something that, for people who generally are not necessarily that engaged.
Yes.
And they might want, whoever the boards are of those neighborhoods, I know, you know, Chestnut Oaks has one, and Lawrence Farm South has one, and Random Farms has one, there are a lot of neighborhoods, and they may want to facilitate a meeting, whether it's at someone's house or a community center somewhere, so to engage those neighbors, because you might get people who will read those emails but aren't reading a town newsletter or something.
Townsfolk clubs maybe another way people can access pockets of people who, you know, are involved on a more micro level.
So what I'm gonna do is this, 'cause I, so half of the list here that's being created, I think, is sort of just getting notice out to people and saying like, we're gonna post it here 'cause people see it. And then I think some of what you're adding, which I, it was good, it's good to hear, like, we physically need to go to the senior center and do a session there. Or we physically need to organize something with the PTA and show up to the PTA meeting and go there to them, and so.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's more than one, 'cause it's different middle school elementary, you know.
So. So, right, so these are the little like nuances that.
The farmer's market, if you can get there before then, yeah.
Yep.
So why don't I take this?
But I have a market rate that'd be a good one to reach the preschool families. I don't know, it's off the way ahead, but I can.
You know, also, there's a popular, it's a population, I listen to the library.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they may not have children in school, but there are certain people who utilize the library really.
Hmm, true.
One, I think it's a good event.
Anyway, the, the one problem with the PTA and the library, anything connected to the CCSDs, that they do have town of Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, that's why.
So we have to be clear that this is more and.
I don't mind, I don't mind hearing from someone who's from town of Rock, it's something to think about.
Tech.
Right.
They seem to think about.
I know.
So it's only, it's only what's to think about. And if they're, if they go to school here, they're gonna most likely be utilizing.
Do we want to?
Yeah.
Except they're not paying town taxes, which will fund this, all of this, so it's a little different.
It's just a caveat.
This is a school issue.
But that's gonna be a demographic question for how we process.
Right.
It, that's a place where the survey could be, it'll help them later, where you can.
Yeah, the survey's gonna be better on that. We're not gonna, I mean, you'll get a sign-in sheet where you'll see, but I'm not gonna know that the resident who said X was grabbing on Pleasant.
Yeah.
And I would, I would expect that, I think, I feel like, I mean, the idea isn't what makes you want to spend time here?
I mean, I think any of them. I don't think it's a good.
Right.
And if there's no time here, they're going to spend money here, so they, they don't want money.
But any discussion, like any, if you're gonna go to the PTA, you're gonna specifically say it's, you know, we wanna get your, your views on town on land in the Chapua Hamlet.
Yeah.
So people who maybe are living in another town may not.
Right, exactly.
Father.
All right, I'm gonna take this. We're gonna summarize, we're gonna try to finagle a mission statement for you to, but it's for us. Maybe it's just us internally that has that mission statement, we'll figure that out. And we're gonna start looking at narrative and the different types of logos based on what we heard today. I'm also gonna take the notes from the outreach and categorize them into different buckets, I'm gonna call them, from us going physically to places and being there to simply having a flyer there so people are notified of upcoming things. And then we'll cross-reference that against the, uh, comp plan effort that we led. And then if there's still anything missing or something, aha moment, Sabrina's like, there's no way after that, and you'll let us know.
Yeah.
I think one thing to add.
Not unless it popped up in the last, mm, ten years.
One, one thing to add, which I don't think you need to go there personally, but I think we'd wanna have in-person flyers, would be to put at the Chapua Performing Arts Center.
Okay.
'Cause we're gonna, we have like different demographics come for different things, we're having interactive, else you get a lot of little kids, we're having moms comedy night, we're getting, there's a pink.
Oh. Was that real interest? Here also, from people who don't choose to.
Yeah. I think that might be through the chamber. They're all, they're all members of the chamber.
But, but anyway, that's my.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but that's good, but all.
It could be a question that's specifically asked, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That's, it's a good, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great question.
It's a great question.
Okay, all right, that was a lot. I appreciate it, though, that was good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're good?
It's kind of good that we're all like on the same, it feels like we're all pretty much on the same page, which is very.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, now we just have to make sure we crap all of that into one quick paragraph that people read.
Right.
All right, good, thank you all for that time. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
I enjoyed it. Me too.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah.
It's the fun stuff.
I know.
Yeah.
Not for maybe Sabrina, but for the rest of us.
It's fun.
All right, thank you.
At this stage.
Sure, don't worry.
Everyone's good, Jaclyn, Joy, it's like.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much. Bye-bye.
It's gonna be your turn, buddy.
Um, all right, just, um, uh, before we start the secret determination, which isn't gonna be short, can we take a two-minute bathroom break, please?
Yes, sure.
Okay, um, so we're gonna pause for, which is probably gonna be close, circa five.
Two minutes.
Five.
But, uh, pause and we'll be back after a short break.
But the motion to adjourn for a recess?
Do we need to, yes, on favor.
Yes.
Christina, can you just mute, please? Thank you.
Or you wanna, you report us? Are we recording?
Yep, still recording, you're good.
Now we are, okay. All right, perfect, thank you. So we are back. Um, thanks for bearing with us during that short commercial break. And now we are gonna start to talk about secret determination for Fifty North Greeley. So Sabrina, do you wanna walk us through this?
Sure, so, um, in the packet you received a copy of a draft negative declaration your board directed the last time this issue was before you. Um, the draft negative declaration, I can go through area by area if you want, if you want me to answer questions about certain areas, if you want me to review mitigations, I look to you to direct me how you wanna walk through this.
So I think, you know, not everyone has seen this before, especially on the board, so I, I think you should walk us through the whole thing.
Okay.
And then certainly anyone can have interrupted us questions.
Yes, yes, please ask questions as I go along and I hit the different areas, 'cause some areas are gonna be more conversational than other areas.
Uh, can I ask a basic, like, definition question before we go?
Okay. Sure. Sure.
What is significant?
Nick?
Yeah, it's like a loaded question.
Gotta be defined somewhere, but.
So if.
That was where I felt like I was.
I'm gonna hand that over to the evil council to answer that question.
Smart.
Well, yes, if you want, I can pull up the secret regulation, but so the State Environmental Review Act determines that if something has a significant environmental impact, um, that you would then issue a possec, and that, neg, that means require further examination of that. Significance is not a fairly well-defined term, because it's real left to your discretion, looking at the charac- the, the, the land areas, whether it's water, traffic. So if you determine that that rises to a level that, um, triggers and requires further evaluation.
And is this, um, is this about it definitely does or potentially could or?
You have the discretion. It's potential, so it's a, will it have a potential significant adverse, adverse environmental impact, so there are four different.
Adverse, that's adverse, that can't be mitigated, right?
Well, you would look at the mitigation to determine if that, that address is right.
Satisfaction.
Correct.
Thank you.
And and there's some examples in here where we can talk about an impact, although it's not an adverse impact
Yeah, potential significant adverse.
Mm-hmm.
or an impact that they're offering mitigation for. Okay, so, um, yeah, sure, so, um, the, the document is, has line numbers on it, so if there's a specific line that you have questions about, we refer to it by line numbers. I'm gonna go through the first couple pages relatively quickly. The negative declaration is written to describe the action, which is page one and page two. Page three is really a project history, where we recite all of the documents we've received from the applicant. Um, this, there's several pages of document recitation. And then we continue with the project history, we talk about the work group meetings, it's really just, um, additional correspondence received, consultant memorandums received, it's a recitation of the record, right? So everything in, from page one to page nine speaks to the history of this application and where we've been since the day we received the first submission. You guys really shouldn't have any questions on that.
And to Sabrina's form, one of the requirements in secret is that if you're considering a negative declaration, you have a reasoned elaboration, it just can't be, we find there's not gonna be any impacts there before we adopt the negative declaration. So the document that Sabrina and staff have prepared, thirty-four pages, appropriately so, so it sets forth your rationale and your basis for reaching the conclusions that, um, you've reached over the past couple of months during your review.
And so all of the, the pages one through nine are the resources that document the rationed explanation of why we're saying that there is no significant adverse environmental impact. So the, the reason supporting the negative declaration really start on page ten. These categories, if you recall at the last meeting when we discussed the negative declaration, there were thirteen categories. These categories are listed in this document, we start with land. Land refers to the ground, the soil, the steep slopes, looking at the property itself, what it consists of today and how it's going to change. There are no steep slopes on page eleven, exposed bedrock, unique geological features. The depth to the water table is between two and four feet, there's no subsurface building being proposed, there may be retentions in need for piles, that'll be discovered later on during the site plan application process. Ultimately, because of the condition of the land today, as urban. Ultimately, because of the condition of the land today, as urban substrata overlaying with asphalt and concrete, that is not going to be any different in the future with the, under the concept plan. Okay, so there's no impact to land. You're not taking a wetland area and filling it. There's none of that happening here. It's urban land area, it will continue to be urban land area. So there's no significant adverse impact to land. The second category, geological features, there's no unique geological features as, or unusual landforms as, you know, we are required to look at under secret in relation to state resources and historical databases. So there is no significant adverse impact to geological features. On page twelve, where we really look at stormwater, wastewater and drinking water. And the neg deck is set up so that you will understand what the proposed action, which is adoption of the NG zero legislation, what the legislation says about each of these areas, what the concept plan is saying they're going to do under each of those areas. And then there's the explanation of how there is no impact. So for example, under stormwater, the legislation calls for compliance with chapter one oh eight A, which is our stormwater management and erosion and sediment control regulations. The applicant will need to produce a stormwater pollution prevention plan. They have offered, the, the concept plan indicates that they'll add green and blue roofs. They'll look at additional stormwater treatments, quantity, timing releases, hydrodynamic separators, below grade retention chambers. All of these practices will be incorporated into the proposed concept plan, into the proposed site plan that will address stormwater. Wastewater, we have analysis that was previously conducted when we did our infrastructure and street skate revitalization program that improved our wastewater systems and our stormwater systems. We have an analysis that was done. We are asking is, we know that the application that you guys reviewed in the concept plan will require, I want to say it's eighty-six hundred, eight thousand three hundred gallons per day will generate eight thousand three hundred gallons per day of wastewater. It does not seem that that will overload our systems based on known information. A mitigation under wastewater is because we really need a more detailed study is a comprehensive sanitary sewer system analysis, which will be developed as part of site plan.
So to be clear to people listening at home, even though this is second, if, if it turns out that it can't be sustained because of the wastewater, that would prevent it from being built, or somehow the site plan would have to accommodate it in another way.
The site plan will accommodate it another way, or they will go in a different direction. This site is advantageous in that there is a county wastewater system on the north end. And there's also access to a town wastewater system. So it really gets, when it comes to wastewater, it's really about the size of the pipes and the connections.
Setting aside the wastewater, whatever, whatever issue may arise is still effectively protected. The community is protected because the site plan, if it falls foul of that, would rectify it, someone would mitigate it, prevent it from happening.
Yeah, at the end of the day, yes.
So Sabrina, I, I have a question that goes to land and stormwater. And we got a letter very recently alluding to uses of the land when it was zoned for industrial regarding hazardous materials that had been on the land and the land being used as a fuel supply area.
A residence.
Can you, can you, yeah, I mean, I, so I think, I think I have a, a duty to, to ask and to understand what has been done with respect to that? And if that has been put, the issue has been put to rest.
The issue has been put to rest in that there's no DEC documentation that this used to be a, a super fun site or hazardous material was on the site. And that, do you have history on that?
Yes, I could just add, um.
Do you want to move up here?
Sure.
So what you're talking about is conducting what's called a phase one and a phase two environmental analysis. The phase one environmental analysis is a history of how the site has been used for as long as anybody's been looking and what is known. We've done a phase one. And the phase one indicates where possibly some additional analysis needs to be done in terms of the, the other ground soils. That will still need to be done and completed, but it hasn't been done yet.
So then there's a question, if, if it turns out there is some contamination, what happens?
They'll have to clean it.
Then they have to remediate it.
So right, and to this, to this point.
Can you explain the process there and the timing?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain the process and timing? What will you do and when and how long will it take?
Uh, it's, it's all part of the development process. And, and kind of on the business side, you can't get a, you can't get financing until you produce a clean site. So any financial entity requires a phase one, which looks at, at the history of the site. And then anything that suggests that there might be some contaminant. And there was not anything that, that alarmed anybody. But there could be some additional analysis that will have to be done to, so that in order to get financing, the site must be clean.
Right, I mean, that happened in Hunts Place, right?
If we knew that was a brownfield site.
That was a known, right, but that was a DEC registered brownfield.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, and so this site is not registered. We are required, right, there's no record of spills, there's no record of contamination on this site.
There are no spills.
As a routine process in the, in the site plan application process, when you actually have a project, they need to show that the man is verify that this is true. You're adopting legislation which doesn't go down to that granular level right now. That happens in site plan. So the land in this instance is, is the land being used differently than it's being used today? The answer is no, but there are safeguards in place through the site plan approval process and what is required to be submitted and verified. The applicant will need to show consistency with this negative declaration. If they provide a documentation that's not consistent with this negative declaration, then they either have to curate or an environmental impact statement needs to be conducted. We reopen secret.
And look, if they started, if everything got approved and they started digging, right, for construction and all of a sudden was determined that nobody knew, but there was a big oil spill and it's contaminated.
Or they found dinosaur bones.
Right, you'd have to, whatever it is, that would be cooler. You'd have to, you'd have to deal with it. You'd have to either remediate the, the land or dig up the dinosaur bones and call the archaeologists.
And there were, there were no underground storage tanks.
There's no indication.
Yeah, no indication.
The body, the body line, someone has to go in for the, there's protections in place, it should be incurred.
Of course.
There's, there's garbage.
Right, right now, all of the measures that are required to verify from this level, there's nothing that shows a flag that we need to be concerned about it and that it should be anything other than a negative declaration. Or a, a, uh, no significant adverse environmental impact in regards to that.
Okay, thank you. With that curiosity, where would that fall if, if it were known or would it not? Is it just totally?
It would fall under land.
Okay, thank you.
It would fall under land. So wastewater, we need a, a mitigation. And the wastewater would be a comprehensive sanitary sewer system analysis as part of site plan approval. So if you were to move forward, declare a negative declaration, you would have a resolution that would have these mitigations outlined. That is one of the mitigations. There are others, but that would be one of them. When it comes to drinking water, there's a summary of our drinking water, of how much water we draw from the New York City reservoir system. Based on the concept plan, eight thousand three hundred gallons per day of drinking water will be utilized. And the size of the pipes are discussed, the connections. There does not seem, there seems to, based on analyses that have been done previously, there's ample water supply to provide water to this site. Again, the applicant is to prepare a comprehensive water system engineer's report to verify that everything is in place to provide adequate water supply to this site. When do we expect that with site plan approval? Again, you have a concept plan that's being considered as part of the, the, the adoption of the NG zero legislation. You do not have enough information in the form of a site plan application. Your NG zero legislation requires the next step for this application to submit a site plan application to you for review. That site plan application must be deemed complete before you undertake your review. The analyses that I'm identifying in this negative declaration must be submitted with that application to be deemed complete for review.
What is, and forgive me for not knowing this, but what is the oversight? When they, the applicant submits the report during the site plan review?
You have your cross.
Who's cross, I, I don't know.
Your, your, no, but your professional town staff know, okay?
So you'll be like, okay, this is legit, this is a booklet, or they did what they wanted to do.
This is legit, when we run into an area.
Right.
When we run into an area where you don't have professional staff, let's use traffic as an example.
Right.
The town will consult out to a professional who will verify the information that the applicant is submitting to be true.
Okay.
Okay, you, the town board is not expected to, to have knowledge enough to say this is correct or not. That is what staff do for you.
Okay, thank you.
Or outside consultants.
So.
When I say staff, it is the larger staff. Air on page fourteen, line twenty-three, there's a short section on air. The entire premise of the NG zero legislation is to facilitate redevelopment in a sustainable manner. There are no noxious air emissions coming from this development. There are certain thresholds that secret requires you to examine this application, this action of adoption of the legislation and what's represented in the concept plan does not give us any indication that we will be close to reaching those air emissions that are required for us to do further analysis.
But again, if the site plan review didn't mean, didn't reflect all of this, that would change the, the air part.
If they were putting in, if they were putting in some type of manufacturing plant that required an air emission filter, whatever, this paragraph would be very differently written.
No, I mean, like, if, I guess what I'm asking is if something, you said it, what did you say? That they have to show consistency with the.
With this, right, so if they do something like air emissions, let's say they decide to put a metal smelting operation, commercial operation in, in the space. If they come back with that as part of their site plan, we would need to reexamine what the air mission, how are they getting?
This kind of keeps them honest, because if they do that, then.
So that's a. This is the protection. This is the protection against a massive change between what we're looking at in the concept and what we'll see in the future.
Right.
Correct, you have, you have, your proposed action is an NG zero legislation for a first floor commercial residential above building. Okay, you, in your legislation are not anticipating a use that's going to invite a noxious air emission.
Right.
This is a safeguard, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Oh, no, absolutely.
What this process is.
No, li- listen, this is the first time, I believe, most of you are going through this. So feel free to ask whatever question, there's no question that is so. Um, plants and animals. In reviewing the site, it's an urban site, there are no natural habitats, flora or fauna that rises to the level of impact on this site. It's eighty percent impervious right now, okay? So there's no adverse environmental impact to plants and animals.
Right, it's not like we're raising a forest.
You're not cutting any trees, you're not, but you're not cutting any trees.
Those toys there. It's a tree.
There's no streams that flow through the site, there are no wetlands, there's no rare, um, uh, blackberry bush, okay? There's nothing on the site in regards to unique flora or fauna or natural habitats. Same thing with agricultural resources. There's no agricultural resources that apply to this piece of property. So there's really just a one line, there's none there, no adverse environmental impact. Okay, number seven, aesthetic resources. This was a little bit more impactful, this action. There's a lot of discussion. It talks about the existing structure, the history of the property. It talks about what is surrounding the property. What, you know, what, um, what's around the property, that's on page fifteen. Page sixteen, we then talk about what the concept plan is representing and what the applicant has provided and has been assessed in relation to aesthetic resources. And that relates to the shadow study that was provided through the concept plan. It relates to the augmented reality video. It relates to the three D model that was provided. All of that plays into the aesthetics. What this discussion results in is a recognition that there is a difference of opinion that emerged during your review regarding, regarding this matter, right? It's saying that we had many people commenting on this building's aesthetic. Regardless of all of those opinions, the town board finds that the size, massing and design of the building will not create a significant adverse environmental impact on aesthetic resources. Seeker identifies specific aesthetic resources. There are no aesthetic resources other than somebody's opinion playing into this section of the negative declaration. Okay, so it doesn't rise to New York State DEC's level of aesthetic impact or needing that level of analysis, but there is a community aesthetic that you all consider during your review, and that is what's spoken to you.
Listen, what would you example?
Yeah, can you give us an example of something that rises to that DEC level? Not to put you on the spot.
Um, the Hudson Highlands. You want to put a, a, a twenty-story building on Vista that's going to affect the Hudson Highlands, the view of the Hudson Highlands? The Hudson Highlands is listed as an aesthetic resource in New York State.
Got it.
Okay, there's nothing here like that. Historic and archaeological resources on page seventeen. We received documentation as provided to us through the application process that the Office of Park for Creation and Historic Preservation advised that there were no neighboring properties, including archaeological and or historic resources that are listed or eligible to be listed on the New York State National Register of Historic Places that will be impacted by this project. So the property has no known archaeological resources of significance, okay? It's not as if this is being built next to the historical site. That's an example of a historical resource. Open space and recreation. This specific, um, section of the negative declaration talks about the property being eighty-eight percent impervious. It talks about the concept plan and the public spaces that are being provided through that concept plan. It talks about the location of the site within walking distance to recreation field, the Route one twenty sidewalk. It also mentions that the town is working to obtain funding for the multi-use cha- trailway up to Chapel Crossing. We then talk about all of the lands, the open space and recreation lands in the Newcastle as a whole that residents of this building will have access to. There is a standard that the American Planning Association has studied regarding the amount of open space per person. The standard is one acre of open space per one hundred residents. If you look at the four, over four thousand two hundred and forty acres of, of parkland, open space that we have in Newcastle, it's twenty-four times that of the recommended standard. So there is no significant adverse environmental impact to open space and recreation. Impact on critical environmental areas. This is a specific recognition or identification of areas throughout New York State called critical environmental areas. There is no, um, critical environmental areas located within proximity to this property. So there is no significant adverse environmental impact. Parking and traffic cir- and circulation. So a lot of analysis was done on parking and traffic circulation. And so what this section does, it talks about what the NG legislation is proposing when it comes to parking and when it comes to parking. It includes the section of the code. Um, it includes the section of the code in this negative declaration, and it talks about the concept plan and the fact that there will be fifty-two parking spaces on the first floor, uh, ground floor of the concept plan building. The, it talks about two parking spaces for onsite car share service. It talks about the concept plan and the proposed building being able to accommodate parking for all of the residential uses on the site. A total of forty-one parking spaces would be needed for the commercial uses that are associated with the concept plan. The applicant has indicated that those forty-one parking spaces will be utilized off-site in the parking district. The, the applicant provided analysis of availability of parking in the parking district. Our consultant verified that their analysis was true. There is availability to allow these forty-one spaces to be absorbed into the parking district during the peak AM, peak PM, and Saturday morning, um, at timeframe analysis. When the demand for commercial use is at its, at its highest, so we can accommodate the forty-one spaces. The analysis furthers that this site is in the business retail parking zoning district, it was added in two thousand nine. They are not within the taxing district of the parking district, so they're not currently being taxed as a member of the district. Given that the property is not within that taxing district, the negative declaration asks for a payment in lieu of parking to be made to allow them to utilize the forty-one parking spaces on a yearly basis. So that is a mitigation for use of the town parking spaces. When it comes to traffic circulation, um, the analysis, the, the applicant provided analysis as to how many additional cars they would be adding into the three intersections that are affected. Um, they're looking at on page twenty-two, line twenty-seven, thirty-one new vehicle trips during the weekday morning peak hour, eighteen new vehicle trips during the weekday PM peak hour, and twenty-four new vehicle trips during the Saturday peak hour. Our traffic and, uh, consultant analyzed what the applicant provided and determined that there was no impact on level, on the existing level of service of these intersections. And specifically, they said, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers reports, a development would need to generate an additional one hundred vehicle trips in a peak hour to change the level of service. We are nowhere near the generation of that number of trips with this concept plan to dictate that a level of service would change, okay? So there is no impact when it comes to traffic circulation. There is in a, historically, we've studied our intersections in the hamlet. We know that there is increased growth every year traveling through our intersections. We also know that at some point, we're going to need to make changes. It was recommended for the third time by a traffic consultant from the town that we should consider implementing a fair share program where land use applications contribute to future infrastructure improvements based upon additional traffic generated by their proposed development, okay? This is something we have yet to do.
What does that mean?
It means you need to pay some money towards future traffic improvements.
But that's not payment in lieu?
No.
That's parking.
Payment in lieu is for parking, we're now looking at traffic circulation going, we know at some point we're gonna need to make improvements to our intersections.
What kind of money are we asking?
We're, we're not asking for anything.
Not in here, but in the future, what does that look like?
I don't know.
And what are realistic improvements that can be made, you know, we did the, um, T-intersection.
So a light at Woodburn in the train station.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Uh, a light at Woodburn Ave and, and, and South Greeley. Reconfiguration of that slip lane at the triangle. These are all things that were studied as part of the infrastructure improvement.
Chapua Crossing too, they're all studied.
Exactly, I mean, we, we have studied this, and we know at the end of the day, regardless of whether or not we make a change today, over time, the level of service will become so degraded at these intersections that improvements are gonna need to be made. The dollar amount of these improvements are astronomical, we're talking big grant applications. But what we could start to en masse is that matching contribution for those grant.
And how does something like that be done, get done, does it get done as part of this legislation, does it get done separately? And if it's, it has to be done separately, does that automatically bas- exclude this from being able to be charged for those types of improvements? And, so I'm not looking ready yet.
Yeah, no, and there's a lot of questions in there. Um, I think it's gonna require me to get back to you with that, but in terms of the, if you don't have the fair share program up and running at the time this project gets approved, then you couldn't apply for a drive-in.
But I think this would be.
Does it have to be a separate program, that can't be part of this legislation?
No, I think when, um, when you say this legislation, you mean the adoption of the negative declaration, you don't accept.
Then now the NG zero.
Oh, the NG zero, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah. It's not, it's not in that, you don't put that in legislation.
No, it wouldn't, right, that's what I'm trying to think of, the way to do that, because it has to be a calculation, it's not just a flat dollar amount. You know, there's more thought to see if we can get it, and there are some outcomes with the way.
I don't know that we want to put.
I just want to understand, I'm just curious.
No, no, I just want to understand, I'm just curious. This is for another time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just want to.
Yeah.
And where anyone has ever done that and where it's been successful, I.
And look, this might be something that if.
Or an applicant would ever read to like, yeah, I'm at twenty million, we're parking.
If we're looking at the, um, train station parking lot, and we determine that we're suddenly gonna, everyone wants buildings there, and there's gonna be significant more, you know, then it's something in my mind.
Yeah, I'm just observing that she said this is like the third time we've had this recommendation, so I.
Yes, well, while it came up when we were doing the infrastructure and streets gate parking, it's come up when, you know, when we were discussing the form-based code process, and here it is again. Because we keep talking about the same strip, you know, the same intersections.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You know, again, this is not a lot of cars trips that are, that are being added.
Right.
But there's something called background traffic that is forever increasing the traffic through these intersections.
Yeah.
And it could be ten years from now, it could be twenty years from now.
But if we wait twenty years to figure out how we do this, we're not gonna have anything to, enough.
Well, it all comes back to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you may not have all the answers now, but the applicants also want to see their projects approved, and it frames a reasonable and rational basis for requiring something now. Recognize it may not be the, the best answer or what you will know twenty years from now. It allows a project to proceed, allows you to some funding in a dedicated fund so that it's available when you do get there. The difficulty is striking that right balance where it's not a, an extraction order taken where you're grabbing more than you can because it has to have a rational basis be connected to the condition you're trying to mitigate, so it has to be a fair share.
Right.
Versus, you know, based on realities that a developer understands.
But we need to have a provision to be able to do this either way.
Yeah.
And this is about, right, what, this is about bringing it to your attention that we need that provision put in place, we're legal to work on how we could create that provision so that we have it in place when we want to enact it.
So remind us.
But that could take like a year, at least.
Well, right, I'm not, right, right, again, this is in here as a reminder to you that we keep talking about this.
Yes.
Okay, but they don't necessarily have to do it because we're not ready.
No, no, I completely understand, I just, since it was being raised, I wanted to make sure I understood how we.
Yes. Yeah.
How, how that.
So you asked for a question. New Rochelle is an example of a community that when they were doing their form-based code, they'd evolved form-based code, but when they were doing their code, they had a consultant determine the, um, capacity issues that they had for traffic and water sewer, and they came up with a big number. And as developers come in, um, they know there's a formula that they have to, to contribute. And it's all part when they come in, it, it's kind of takes play.
Yeah, understood.
Um, and, and that number is known upfront.
Right.
I thought there was something. I mean, I wouldn't characterize this as a.
I thought it was a mission to get.
There's something that says that everyone needs to pay.
Yeah, that everyone needs to pay, it's a fee that everyone needs to pay.
There's, there's some.
But the point is typically, is how.
Like.
But, but the point is that something we have to plan for, and have to plan to sooner be planned for.
Yeah, they, no, that's, that's real.
The better off.
Yes, the more you can, yeah.
And it's not ambiguous, it's not.
But it's probably.
Not gonna happen here.
But not to a much larger scale.
Understood, thank you.
My way of just saying, hey, guys, look at this.
And building waterfront and.
I appreciate it.
Do watch out. Okay, energy, um, so this one is, um, very well explained as to what the, uh, energy requirements of the legislation are, and if you recall, it is a net zero carbon project. We have heightened energy conservation requirements, no carbon-based fuels. So this explanation incorporates all that. And then we talk about the proposed, the concept plan and the proposed building and all that it is providing to ensure that net zero carbon emission and energy efficiency from the building materials that it is being constructed with, um, renewable energy sources being provided on-site through the concept plan. And then it makes a determination because of its environmental, um, leadership from an energy space, energy conservation and use. Um, there is no significant adverse environmental impact on energy. The next, um, section is community character. Um, this section, very much like aesthetics, is very rationalized regarding the information that the applicant has provided to us to examine and discuss. We talk about the various characteristics of the Chapua Hamlet. Um, what the site is in relation to that character today. It, we then talk about what is being proposed in relation to the height of the building. Um, and the, the, the net-net is that the project will definitely change the appearance of the North River Corridor. However, the change does not constitute a significant adverse environmental impact. Okay, so again, when the public is commenting on character, much like aesthetic, there will be a change. Is that change a significant adverse environmental impact? No. Consistency with the comprehensive plan. This section, um, talks about the NG legislation and what it says it's trying to do um, with a model for sustainable environmentally responsible, responsible development. It identifies thirteen goals, I think it's thirteen, thirteen goals within the COF plan that are being met through the concept plan. So, um, given what the site is today and how it's proposed to be changed via the NG zero legislation, there is no significant adverse environmental impact when it comes to consistency with the comprehensive plan. There's over thirteen goals that say it's already consistent. The next section on the bottom of page thirty-one is socioecono- economics. It talks about housing, the, the percentage, the, the minimum of ten affordable residential units with six units. Um, six units being affordable, uh, for those making sixty percent of the Westchester County median income. Um, four, four of those units, uh, being allocated for workforce housing. Um, it talks about, um, that that is consistent with the town code and with the NG zero legislation. We talk about jobs and employment and temporary construction jobs that will be generated from development of the site. Um, also, the commercial, um, spaces at the site will also generate jobs. So it says there will be no adverse environmental impact in relation to housing and jobs and employment for socioeconomics. Section sixteen is community services and utilities. And this is where we get to, uh, the educational facilities using the Chapua Central School District's formula. It was calculated that the proposed concept plan would generate approximately eleven students. Looking at the history of enrollment in the Chapua Central School District and the ultimate capacity that they can handle based on known information for the school district, there is no, um, adverse environmental impact and there is capacity for the additional estimated eleven children. Emergency services were examined, um, the town assessed, um, the Newcastle Police Department, and they said they would ha- need to hire one additional police officer only after an increase of approximately three hundred and eighty to four hundred new residents. This development project, as conceptualized through the concept plan under the NG zero legislation, does not show an increase in new residents that are anywhere near the need for one new officer. Air noise, odor, and light. Um, it talks about the construction activities, the applicant.
Sorry, can we go back to emergency services?
Correct.
Um, you just, you didn't, you mentioned the police department, but what about fire and ambulance?
Ambu- it's, it's, it's the, it's in line twenty-five, twenty-four. Yeah, it, it refers to the first responders.
First responder.
Right, but.
But it uses the police department as an example.
Got it, thank you.
Um, the, the other entities, the fire and ambulance are volunteer.
Okay, so there's not a.
There's not a good record of how many per would acquire.
So this is solely, so the concern about access.
That will be addressed during site plan.
Right, so this.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, that gets to the root of my question.
Yes. Yeah, that, yeah, the comments that we received.
Those in the fire department access.
From the fire chief.
Parking near the street to accommodate the ladder.
Exactly, that was all related to a site plan application that we have yet to review.
So that will get more attention.
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Um, air noise and odor deals with, uh, air emission permits, state permits, there are none involved in this use. Um, it talks about dust from construction. The applicant submitted a lot of material as to how the building, many components of the building will be put together off-site and put together like a label on-site, preventing a lot of that normal construction dust from occurring. Um, it also refers to our code, which talks about erosion and sediment control and dust control. Um, so operate, so that's construction. There's also a discussion of operationally, there's no operations occurring with the proposed concept plan that would be cause for air noise or odor emissions to rise to the level of being an adverse, um, a significant adverse environmental impact. Light, um, it talks about, uh, lighting, actually with the building and the type of lighting and the direction of the lighting, so it's not leaving the site. Um, there will be inward-facing corridors with the way that the, uh, second floor public, the gardens will be created, so no light will be reflected off, or very little light will be reflected off from the building itself. Um, and it talks about the parking being located under the building behind the commercial uses, so there will be no light from that parking structure to be seen from the street. Um, and for those reasons, the proposed action will not have a significant envi- adverse environmental impact to air or to light. And then there's a conclusion on page thirty-four that said, for the reasons cited within the document, there will not be any significant adverse impact upon the environment. Um, and indicates that no environmental impact statement needs to be prepared and that the town board's SEACER review is complete.
And so that sort of sets forth the reason elaboration. At the beginning, you asked a question about significance, and so the SEACER regulations don't give you a definition of significance. They do, however, in section six, seventeen point seven of the SEACER regulations, talk about some of the criteria you should look at, and one of the items that talks about that the significance of a likely consequence, whether it's material, substantial, large, or important, should be assessed in connection with its setting, its probability of occurrence, its duration, its irreversibility, its geographic scope, its magnitude, and the number of people affected. So it's not a black and white. So it's not a black and white test. It's, but when you compare, for example, number of school students, eleven, versus the existing number of school.
Can you repeat that section for me?
Sure, it's six N Y C R R, and I can send this to the board afterwards. Six seventeen point seven. And it talks about determining, uh, significance. And it's, um, I think that's why you wanna make sure it's a reasoned elaboration because it's not just a check the box type list. You need to review the underlying documents that this board has done, take a look at the environmental assessment form, take a look at the impacts that are being addressed, and then look at how you meet this criteria. And as Sabrina said, you've got a very detailed document that sets forth your final and reasoned elaboration.
So if, I want, we addressed more of the issues, a couple of the issues. For example, if, uh, it turned out there was some environmental issue with the oil spill, that would be dealt with in advance, um, or at the site plan stage. What if, for example, there, a traffic consultant is wrong and there's twenty more cars per hour? If I'm understanding it correctly, because we're still below the one hundred threshold cars per hour, if that's correct, then according to the law and according to the facts, it would not be an adverse environmental impact because we'd still be well below. It may be more than we expected, but even twenty more cars per hour would not change the analysis.
I don't see under the backs from the two traffic experts that it rises to a level of significance, that's right.
Correct, so there's sort of room there. Again, that, we could be subjective about what, what that would mean and how that would impact us and our response to it. But from a seeker perspective, we, since we're still well below that threshold, it's not going to change the analysis.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sabrina, you put in a lot of work on this, so thank you, I really.
Thank you.
It's very appreciated.
I can even see a comment on it, please, Sabrina.
Listen, I, I, I did not do this alone, I had help from it.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
It was really great, thank you.
Thank you.
May I just say, ask what's going to happen next? If somebody, if somebody were to ask me.
Good question.
Um, we have a public hearing next week.
Okay.
Um, another public hearing next week, which will, um, be general, but also people, uh, will be allowed to give comments on the, the secret negative declaration if they so choose. Um, and then we will determine after that meeting whether we're closing the public hearing, which is my hope. Um, and move it to a vote.
Okay.
That, but don't. The only thing you can quote me on is that we are having a public hearing next week.
So just for the, for the board to kind of understand process, right? So if you adopt a negative declaration, you would, you would need to then recommend a resolution, um, finalizing or memorializing your decision-making and any mitigations that are required in relation to the seeker analysis or anything else that you've been talking about. And then you would adopt the red, adopt the regulation, which would then be filed with New York State.
Right, seeker is a prerequisite. You can't take any action on the law or the employee plan until you issue, make your determinations.
Right, and so that determination would be in a form of a resolution.
Okay.
Yep.
So we would.
Adopt a negative, yes.
So we might determine to do that next week, question.
If you do, you need to direct that a draft determination resolution be.
Which we could potentially direct that it be prepared next weekend.
Correct.
I think we should hear from the public on this before we pass a resolution.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're not passing a resolution.
So I mean, if we, if we have a draft, we'll be just looking at it, not voting.
No, we're not looking at a draft next week.
Okay, I thought that's what you said.
No, we could, after hearing from the public, we could authorize Sabrina and counsel to draft a legislation that then we wouldn't be voting on until it was.
Rob, maybe your next step, your next step.
Right, okay.
Hope, hope you're receiving any comments that may or may not inform your discussion as to whether the negative declaration is appropriate or additional mitigation measures. But after you've heard from the public and closed the hearing, you would then, the next step, either A, get questions answered, or B, justify and direct that a resolution should be prepared to adopt negative declaration.
And then.
And then that resolution would be considered at the next public meeting. I mean, we could talk about it in the work session in between, but it wouldn't be considered.
I'm just trying to, um, align the, the hearing with the SECRE declaration, there's no connection? Or do we need to have the SECRE declaration before we close?
No, you need to see your declaration.
You need to close the public hearing.
Right, you would wanna close the public hearing so that way you know and have given the public the opportunity to comment on the legislation, make any other comments about the potential environmental impacts.
Okay. So that the timeline like it looks, looks like.
Close hearing, close hearing, discussion of presenting revisions to the negative declaration, then consideration of a resolution to adopt the negative declaration.
And then.
And then a consideration of a resolution to adopt the law.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, may I just permit it for the underlying project?
Uh, I have a question about closing the public hearing. Once we do that, are we committed to a timeline?
Not on the, uh, uh, secret, no. You're under, I think, annual legislation. You're not, no. Totally within your discretion as to when you wanna vote for that or vote on it.
Okay, got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night.
All right, thanks so much.
Good night, Sabrina.
You're welcome.
So I did send the board a copy of that minute to the SECRE regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, goodbye.
Any questions to the board?
Thanks, Sabrina. All right.
Good night.
And now we're gonna move to our administrative items, thank you. Yep.
So administrative items, we have, uh, three payment of claims retroactively approved. The board didn't meet often in August, uh, we have a few check runs. So we've got three of them to approve. Uh, we have the authorization to adopt the local law regarding the NOX boxes. Uh, Jeremy, we're declaring surplus from, uh, one vehicle. DPW pickup. Uh, authorization to retain the annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance. We have a somewhat small change order for the, uh, roof at the chappack. They needed to remove some rotted wood, I believe. We've got authorization to approve the maintenance bond for Armored Titan for the, uh, chappack roof. Um, authorization to approve an extension of cleaning services. You'll see the next one, it kind of goes along with authorization to award the bid. We are just now awarding the bid for cleaning services that'll begin on October first. Our contract with the current cleaner expired at the end of August, so we do just need an authorization to approve a, a one-month extension for the cleaning services. Uh, we are then switching companies. And authorization to approve cyber insurance, so, um, somehow that slipped through the cracks. I briefed the board about this back in June when, uh, RJ came to us. We actually ended up saving about ten thousand dollars versus the, uh, the quote that we had or the premium that we had for last year due to some of the changes that we made in our securities suite here. So this is just kind of retroactive approval to, uh, approve that cyber insurance.
All right. Any questions for Rob?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Four star.
Please.
I moved, uh, I moved to, uh, Nachfolgung resolution. I moved to approve the payment of claim amount of four hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred three dollars ninety-five cents. Listened on the summary AP check register detail of actual detail report dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Interested to reach claim list on Friday, August eighteenth, this quarter this year.
All in favor.
Hi.
I moved to retroactive approve the payment of claim amount of two hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred three dollars eleven cents. Listened on the summary AP check register detail of actual detail report dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Check for printer distributed to each claim list on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor.
I hope so. I moved to retroactive approve payment of claim amount of two hundred four thousand four hundred ninety dollars ninety-seven cents. Listened on the summary AP register detail of actual detail report dated August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Check for printer distributed to each claim list on Thursday, August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor.
Hi.
I moved to discuss the operation failure terminated to Melissa Amados, community service worker within the police department taken on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, closed business.
All in favor.
Aye. I moved for the change of title for Sean Gonder, uh, part-time parking foreman officer to provisional full-time community service worker within the police department, annual salary of fifty-six thousand eight dollars ninety cents effective September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor.
Hi.
I moved to accept the resignation of John Markowitz, professional motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works effective September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. The town would like to thank John for his service.
All in favor.
Hi.
Aye, go ahead.
I moved authorized posting.
Come on, come on, come on.
You don't have to talk that fast.
Department of Public Works, so the annual salary ranging from fifty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and cents to eighty-one thousand eighty-seven dollars and eight hundred cents.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Moved to authorize the hiring of Oscar Castillo and Josh, Josh Mills for the position of seasonal parks labor within the Recreation and Parks Department. The hourly salary of seventeen dollars per hour effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
I moved to authorize the hiring of following individuals as recreation intended to live in the Recreation and Parks Department. The corresponding rates is indicated below. Study for me.
Yeah, here I am.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi. Sure. I moved to authorize the appointment of Warren Gottlieb as a member of the zoning board of appeals to finish the unexpired term effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This resolution therefore advises the one previously adopted on August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor.
Hi. I moved, I moved to authorize the appointment of Mike Corso as a member of the.
No, no, we're skipping that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I moved to accept the resignation of Jonathan Rosenblum from the Environmental Review Board effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The town would like to thank John for his years of dedicated service.
All in favor.
Hi.
Thank you, John.
I moved to adopt a local law to amend chapter forty-eight of the Town of Newcastle to add a new section, twenty-eight, concerning the installation, maintenance of NOX boxes at commercial, non-residential, and multifamily buildings and structures and for emergency services.
Okay.
All in favor.
Hi. I moved to declare the following vehicle surplus and therefore placing it up for public auction using the professional services of Auctions International Inc. Um, with the item listed below.
A second.
All in favor.
Hi. I moved to authorize the request to retain half the company for the annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance as per the renewal quality date August third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi. I moved to approve change order number one for the purchase and installation of replacement roof for the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center from Armor Titan Construction Corp. For the removal and disposal of the existing damage on the deck for the total amount of one thousand one hundred twenty dollars.
A second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Okay, I moved to approve the maintenance bond as submitted by Armored Tile Construction Corp. For the purchase and installation of replacement roof of the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center in the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, which has been reviewed by the town engineer and town attorney and found to be acceptable as the form amount and duration.
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
I moved to authorize the extension of cleaning services from Paramount Services Group Inc. for the duration through the month of September at the cost of the DPW twenty twenty-two oh six building cleaning services contract award price of four thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents at a four-point-eight percent increase of two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents for the total cost of four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-three cents as per the email of agreement dated August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I moved to authorize the award bid for the DPW twenty twenty-two, twenty-eleven building cleaning services contract, Apple Maintenance Services Inc. for the base bid price of four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
All in favor.
Hi.
I moved to accept the proposal from accredited specialty insurance company for the town's cyber insurance policy to the total amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents effective June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, through June tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor.
I.
I have a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
All in favor.
Jeremy.
All right, thanks.